All right, it's 5:30, time to call the commission meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks to all that are attending tonight's meeting. I hope this goes rather quickly and you're not here for an extended length of time. Gentlemen, have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Do you have any modifications?
I have no modifications, Mr. Mayor.
I know, I don't have any changes either.
Staff request we add an additional item to extend the curfew on prom night, April 17th. Correct, David?
Yes.
Or waive the curfew requirement.
Okay, so...
Will that fall under item K on the request for commission action?
Yes.
And that's for the 17th?
April 17th.
Okay, see, we'll add that as item K to the item for commission action. So with that, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move, we adopt the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Item two, appointments. We have on the Independence Historical Preservation and Research Commission, we have two resignations. Applications are due by noon on April 16th of 2021. Any of the community that is interested in serving on a board, we would like to have you apply. We're always looking for new people to step forward and become a part of the city and provide us valuable information and help us as we move forward making decisions. So I'm going to encourage all of you that might be interested to please apply. It would be greatly appreciated. Item number two, land bank board of trustees. We are looking at, this is a new board. We're looking at seven new members. Applications are due by noon on April 30th of 2021. And of the new members, we are looking for, there are some qualifications of the members that we would like to have, a background. We would like to have one that would have a background in real estate. We were looking at one that would have a background in finance. We would like to have one that would have some kind of background in building construction and one that would have some background as an architect. And because those are going to be critical as far as setting up this land bank board. But I'm going to encourage all of those that might have an interest, apply by noon on April 30th of 2021. We need you to step forward as community and become a part of this board. You're going to provide a valuable service for the commission now and for commission in the future. So please consider it and I'd appreciate if you step forward.
And Mayor, I believe real estate was another focal point on that one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I didn't know whether I'd say that or not.
Okay, you might have, I'm sorry.
All right. Next, item number three, the consent agenda. We've had a chance to look at the consent agenda. Gentlemen, do you have any modifications to this? Are you good with it?
I make a motion that we adopt consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. All right. Item four, items for commission action. Item A, consider proclaiming April 11th through April 17th of 2021 as public safety...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We've made a slight change in the agenda to the one that was published there. You might notice A is different.
Okay, I was looking on my computer screen and not that. Let me back up here. Item A, consider authorizing the annual Riverside Park opening on April 10th of 2021.
Mayor, this event is this Saturday and I don't know if Angela's here.
There we go.
There she is.
Oh, she is. I'll let her talk about it.
Angela, how are you this evening?
I'm doing very well.
Good to see you.
You all as well. So this is the annual event that happens every year. So from 11 to 3 is the free rides that occur. And then we'll have the petting zoo out there as well as camel rides. In the morning, we're actually doing a zookeeper chat at 9 o'clock in the morning and donuts with the donkeys. And then we'll wrap up the evening at 8 o'clock with a movie on the oval as well.
It sounds like a full day.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and I'm sure the weather's turning nice and I'm sure everyone in the community is excited to slowly get back to some type of normalcy and have the park opening. We'll be able to provide a lot of families to get out and enjoy the day. So kudos on the arrangements that you've made to provide entertainment for children of all ages at the park that day. So with that, gentlemen, any comments?
I have none.
I'm looking forward to being there myself. The weather looks like it's going to be very pleasant. I hope that a lot of people turn out for it.
I think we will have a lot of people out there.
Then do I have a motion?
I move, we approve the author... We approve to authorize the annual Riverside Park opening on April 10th, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, next item. Consider proclaiming April 11th through April 17th of 2021 as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Independence. Chief, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you, Mayor?
Good to see you.
11 through the 17th of 2021 this year is a Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Just a tradition that started in 1991 to recognize the service and sacrifice that the members of the Thin Gold Line provide every year and connect people in emergencies with the first responders that can help them.
All right, thank you, Chief. I have to recognize your staff dispatch, the people that are involved in that. You demonstrate a high degree of excellence every day and it can be a challenging and a tough job, but your people seem to handle it very well. So it's kudos from me and the commissioners to your staff, your dispatchers, all the people that are involved in this and that they are going to be able to be recognized and we can give appreciation for the daily service that they provide for the community.
Thank you, I'll relay your support and we appreciate it.
All right, you're welcome, Chief. Gentlemen, any comments?
I'm good.
Good?
Good.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to authorize April 11th through the 17th of 2021 as Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Independence in recognition of the commitment to excellence the members of the Independence Police Department, 911 Communication Center demonstrate daily in their service to the Independence area.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item, consider proclaiming April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Good evening, how are you? Would you please state your name?
My name is Eva Patterson.
Eva, good to see you.
Thank you. We're super excited about Child Abuse Prevention Month is the month of April every year and it's, we're blue, so I'm representing the blue, so.
All right. This is something that, I'm not going to say necessarily here, but as a nation, you know, with the pandemic and the isolation that everyone has had to go through.
Yes.
It's been very trying on families, families, single parent families. Kids not being in school, it's led to a lot of stress and a lot of issues for families throughout the country. And I'm hoping that by proclaiming this, that we will bring attention to that and that people understand that there is, there are programs and help out there.
Yes.
That you can become involved in to get the help that you need. But I'm glad that you're here and I'm glad that we're able to proclaim Child Abuse Prevention Month for this month.
Thank you very much.
So I appreciate you coming here tonight.
Thank you, thank you all.
All right, you're welcome, ma'am. Gentlemen, are we good?
I'm good.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I motion carried. Next item, consider change order number 12 with Hofer &amp; Hofer for Phase 1, 1916 City Hall. Vance, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. What we have before you for consideration is change order number 12. This change order is a reconciliation of an earlier change order that was approved by the commission, that was change order number four. It dealt with the unforeseen conditions of the lack of blocking once the existing windows were removed. And what we worked with the contractor was, was to develop a, not to exceed amount based on a couple of examples that he had prepared to give us the blocking that we need for our new windows. That change order number four was for a total of $43,297.50 based on the accounting of time, based on the accounting of material and the general contractor's markup. He was able to do the work for $9,529.23, which provides a saving, so this is a deduct change order of $33,768.27. So we're very pleased with the accounting and the workmanship that was done on the project and we're recommending approval of this change order.
All right, thank you, Vance. I'm glad to see that it's credit and that helped reduce the overall cost of Phase 1.
Yes.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Vance?
I'm good.
No, I have no questions concerning the change order. Maybe it's just some general questions on the project, the Phase 2 schedule or we're pretty much staying...
So right now, I'm working with the city staff on developing the construction manager at risk request for qualifications and proposals. I provided the city with three different examples that other communities have used. Working with staff, we selected one that we thought was appropriate to use as a template for the city of Independence. Dave and I have been sending back edits and we're ready to now talk with the city manager and other staff. And the goal is to have this draft, RFQ, RFP, in front of the commission on April 22nd. So that's moving along. As part of this RFQ and RFP, it will influence the Phase 2 schedule because we want to make sure that the construction manager at risk is brought on near the end of schematic design and certainly before we go into design development. So we'll update the schedule as soon as we can work through this RFQ/RFP process for the construction manager.
Then if we review it and take action on the 22nd of April, what's the length of time you're allowing for submission of the RFQs?
So Commissioner, that's part of the discussion with city staff is make sure that we are following the city of Independence's procurement process. And so we need to make sure that staff is in agreement with how much time it needs to be advertised. And it is set up as a two-step process. One is qualifications that a committee can rank to develop a short list. And then those firm or firms that are part of that short list would be invited to interview as part of presenting their proposal. So we need to work with city staff to make sure we're allowing the appropriate time for your procurement processes.
Do we have a projected timeline we're trying to meet on that, Kelly?
You put a draft timeline together for us and you advised us it was going to probably be modified.
Based on going through and bringing on the CM at risk, yes, so.
Well, I mean, for the receipt of the RFQs and then setting up the interviews or...
We got the edited version back, I think, yesterday or today. And David and I haven't had a chance to go through that, but we'll have to go through that and work through it. And then, I don't know, did you have a draft date on that?
Yeah, we're, the draft is done and we're ready now. Vance and I are now ready to sit with Kelly and Jeff, finalize that. We'll get that done probably this week so that we can have it on the 22nd agenda. I mean, we're, put it out, whether that's two or three or four weeks and...
Right.
We're going to need some guidance on how long it needs to be out.
Yeah, how long to put that out there and we're probably looking June.
Yeah, at the latest is what we're hoping, yes, is, so.
Maybe the first meeting in June?
So the RFQ, you'll give them, if it's, the 22nd is when we'll review it and approve, then it'll go out at that point. So then you're saying four weeks to receive the RFQs back? That'd be the end of May. Then you'll set interviews, which could be another three to four weeks.
Could be immediately because, Commissioner, what we've asked for is both the qualifications and proposal to be submitted at the same time. So it would be a matter of just then turning around and scheduling that interview immediately.
So like you're saying, maybe mid...
Yeah, we may only go three weeks. We just need to visit with Vance and Lacey and Kelly and Jeff and see how long we think we need to put that out there and, you know. We're working as quick as we can.
Yeah, just kind of give everyone an idea. So we're probably looking at mid-June having the selection. Tend to, not, you know, I'm not asking for a commitment, just some idea. You know, I don't want to sit here into June and think, well, we haven't done that yet. We're still waiting, so.
And we got the survey information, I think, today too, but I haven't had a chance to forward that on.
Yeah, because the survey kind of, it kind of deals with some of the issues you're going to have with redesign or not redesign, but the modifications and where the property lines are established, so.
The survey is an important component. It can be run concurrent with bringing the CM on, but that information is important as we look at subdividing the hospital property so for the fire and EMS addition as well as a potential third lot that we can, the city then can determine whether it goes with the sale of property or the city holds that and utilizes it for training for fire and EMS.
So we're looking first to mid-June.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Great, you guys are doing a lot of work and a lot accomplished.
Vance helps a lot.
No, thank you. That was the only question I had.
All right, thank you, Vance. So do I have a motion on this?
I move to approve change order number 12 and authorize the mayor to sign the agreements.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item, consider a proposal with Indigo Design for final design through construction phase services for Central Park and Park Boulevard Sports Complex.
And Mayor and Commissioners, we've been working with the committee, with the REC Commission and also Commissioner Coflish to work through this project. And Doug Pickard is also on the phone, I believe. Doug, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
And this is the proposal for the construction phase services. And if you have any specific questions about the proposal, Doug can answer those. If you have any financial questions, Lacey is here to answer those. And also Brent Julian is also here in case you have any questions from the REC Commission that are also participating in this project.
Brent, would you like to give us an overview of what has been discussed up to this point?
I don't know so much about an overview, but we're definitely here to say we very much like this timeline. We think it's very doable for what we need to do down there right now. We're using Park Street for soccer and baseball fields. So this timeline that Doug's put together for us as far as, you know, being ready to play baseball, softball next year down there is very doable for us to do. So basically just here for, to say we're 100% on board with it and very much support the timeline, so. If you have any direct questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those, but as far as the...
If, going by memory, if I remember right, if the schedule holds true, you're looking at holding sports in the fall of 2022. Is that correct?
No, we'd actually, on the new, with the new sports complex, we've actually backed that up to the summer of 2022 now. We would not try to play the soccer in the fall yet. We'd go ahead and let the grass and everything get, getting grown in there, which Doug's probably better at explaining that to me. But, so the new timeline would be, like I said, we would go ahead and have soccer this spring is there right now. We'll play our baseball, softball season through July and then we'd be able to get off there for them to do this and hope, and plan to play baseball, softball 2022. So we'd be one season away from actually playing on the new complex down there. And the first one would be the summer baseball, softball.
Okay, so you're looking at less than a year's turnaround?
Yeah, basically, we're looking right out of year.
From when season starts, okay.
And that's the exciting part because, you know, we'd like to do some fundraising and get the community behind this as well. And I really do, we, you know, as we discussed, it kind of got this all rolling. You know, we do not have the lights replaced down there yet on Park Street for this season. So this season, Nick McBride, who's my sports director, is doing a really good job of trying to make it as, you know, as good as we can down there without lights on all the facilities. But there again, want everyone to know, this would be the last time we're doing that. And then, you know, come next year, we'd have the new facility hopefully up and ready to go. So that to me is very exciting, to see the timeline being that quick and everything. So like I said, we're 100% all in. We'll do whatever we can in all areas, so. But we really like it and really appreciate the work Kelly and everybody's put in so far with it, so.
I do have a question and it involves lighting. Of course, the lighting will be LED, which is the new and LED's been around for a while, but it's getting more, it's less expensive to install than when it originally came out. But my question would be concerning Evergy as an entity. They have a foundation. I wonder if they've been approached or we consider maybe approaching them as far as when it comes to the LED lighting? If they would have maybe some type of grant money available that they would be willing to contribute toward the lighting of the fields, which is going to be a considerable, considerable amount of lighting upgrade for that? But whether they had anything in place that they would be willing to offer a grant, some amount to the community to enhance the lighting for the new fields?
Yeah, that's a great idea and I mean, something I think we will definitely explore as we forward. Lacey's a lot better with the grants and stuff than I am, but we are all trying to look for, you know, items like that. And, yeah, I think that's a good avenue. We'll definitely try to go down that way and see if we can get anything from it anyway, so.
All right, all right, thank you, Brent. Gentlemen, Commissioner Hayes?
Well, as we were speaking just a moment ago, we were talking about, or you were talking about fundraising efforts. I recall the total projected cost of the project. What percentage of the project is the fundraising goal? Who knows what that percentage is?
Lacey here.
We haven't formally discussed the goal.
Yeah, we're still working through all of that on how we would fund the entire project. Lacey has some ideas and we're looking for grant funding to determine what the need was. Originally, when we talked, we talked about doing something like we did for the fountain where the city provided a dollar for every $2 that were donated. I don't know if it would be exactly that, but we haven't set the exact amounts based on how much the need would be.
This was kind of the first step we needed to get was the agreement for the design and the construction services. And we talked about looking at the fundraiser being two different sports, so two different emphasis for fundraising. One, reaching out to those that are interested in the soccer program and then the other in the baseball, softball programs since. The fields have been there for years. We've had a lot of, a lot of players go through Clark James Field and looking at being able to reach out to former residents that could commit because this is a major improvement for the youth of Independence for the future. The organization of the fields provides a lot better place, areas. And if you've been a parent trying to get from a T-ball to a little league to a coach pitch, the way it's spread out, you get more exercise than the kids. So, you know, that alone and the consolidation of the soccer fields all in one area, it's going to be a remarkable complex for the city of Independence and providing activities for youth. And some of the features, basketball courts, revitalize the batting cages, the play area located for the ball field. So that's one of the things, sometimes brother and sister aren't really as interested in sitting and watching older brother or sister play softball. So it gives a secure area for them to play during that time, so. You know, there's a lot of avenues. We looked at with this contract's approval, then it opens the door to really investigate the fundraising areas that you can reach out to, to baseball, to Evergy for lighting and then former and current residents. So this was the initial step we needed to start looking at the fundraising capacities.
And Doug's done a very good job too with his design, in my opinion. Also, we have the walking, running track out around the facility. And, you know, our hopes are we can do the 5Ks in this area as opposed to maybe always, you know, having to shut off the streets at the park and stuff. So we've got a lot of ideas and a lot of different avenues to go down. I think we do incorporate a lot of people, the baseball, softballers, obviously, and soccer players, but runners and, you know, we're even going to, you know, have a multi-sport field down there for our flag football and stuff. So it would definitely incorporate everything we'd like to do in a very centralized location. So, like I said, we love the design, so.
I've not been, I've been here a good number of years, but I know the fields preceded me, but they were probably developed in the 50s.
I'm not even sure when they were developed.
I don't have any, I'm taking a guess. But they basically, we've basically been using a design that was put in place a good number of years ago.
Yeah.
And we've reached a point now to where we need to, need to do a comprehensive upgrade of what this is going to look like to get us down the road for the next number of years. So it's a good place to start. So any other questions? Anyone have a question for Doug?
I guess I have a question for Doug just to make sure. And that is that within the design that you're... And that is that within the design that you're, and the design services that you're going to be providing for us, one of the biggest concerns for the, the lower elevation fields is that the potential for floodwaters. And you're going to cover all of that in the design and flood proof to the best of your ability, those areas that might have floodwaters, correct?
That's absolutely true. To be perfectly clear, the, the fields themselves will still be subject to that 500-year flood elevation, flood elevations there. However, the new concessions restroom building for the soccer area, it happens to, we're, we're able to put it on the one site, the one spot on this entire site that's actually above all that. So the new construction of that building would be out of the floodplain. All of the fields would be a little bit higher, I'm talking about the ball fields. All of those fields will be a little bit higher than they are now. So the lowest field, the two south fields, would be higher in elevation. So they would be less subject to, you know, a moderate flood event. So we would be improving that situation. But to be clear, that, you know, if we had a major, major flood event, the fields themselves, the lighting controls, all of that, of course, will be above flood elevations. So none of that will be subjected to damage or, you know, having to redo lighting systems if, if one of those major flood events would come through. Obviously, the existing concessions restroom building is, is where it is. We would not be able to adjust that particular situation. But the new score boxes for the new fields would all be higher in elevation than they are right now and, and better flood proof than they are now. So we think we'd be improving the situation in all cases of existing construct, or existing fields. And in cases of new fields, the soccer and the soccer building, those would be in far better shape. And in fact, the, the new building would be entirely out of the floodplain.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
You bet. And by the way, I should interject. I'm very sorry to not be there this evening. I expressed to Kelly, my father is dealing with some very serious health issues and it's just very difficult for me to make it happen. But I do apologize. I, I do tremendously appreciate the opportunity to be involved and, and I would normally have been there. And I, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. We, we understand and we hope for a, a good outcome for your father. And you, you take care.
Appreciate that very much.
Are we, any other questions, gentlemen?
Good.
I have no further questions.
Okay, then do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Indigo Design.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Aye.
Okay, okay. Next item, consider all feasible and prudent alternatives to the proposed demolition of 201 East Main Street.
Mayor, I'm going to start out with this. And then we also have our local historical board chairman here, Sean, that will also have something to say. And Jeff may have something to say. But as several of you know, or all of you know, 201 East Main has been an issue for about seven, seven to eight years. When the previous Dollar General store relocated to the East City Limits, it was owned by a trust out of New York City and gentlemen there. And the building was in, back in 2015, the southeast corner had already collapsed and was in rough shape. He had just recently purchased this building as it was still the Dollar General at that time. And then they relocated and so he was left with this building. Code enforcement began the process of working with him and the building. I can remember their estimates of repair back then, just to do what was needed there was roughly $150,000. But since 2015, you know, it came to the commission. We were going through condemnation process. SHPO, or the State Historical Society, which I'm sure is what Sean's going to do tonight, oppose any demolition just because of how it affects the historical condition of the downtown. And a gentleman stepped up and offered to purchase the property for $1, which at the time, the commission, you know, he offered to take a chance to fix it and they gave him that chance. So that building since that time has sat there. He does not have, did not, or does not have the means. He is still the current owner of the building. Now the rest of the roof has failed. The east wall, the, be the northwest corner, there's a large portion of the roof that has failed and has began pushing on the west wall to the extent where the architect, or the engineer, and I put in your packet, he looked at it in 2015 and then he just looked at it again. Is, feels the building is in danger of collapse and that it is in need of removal. I do not know what the cost would be, you know. Leonard, Sean may be able to put a number on that. I know the cost was 150,000 back there, you know, 200, 250,000. I do not know, or if it's even possible to repair. I know the gentleman that owns it has no means to fix it. I think Jeff can speak to that. And I do not believe the city has the means to fix it. But I do know from the structural engineer, it is a danger. We have to barricade it off and that the building could collapse. So with that, I'll answer questions or we can hear from Sean and the local society.
Sean?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, by the nature of it being within the historic district, any removal or demolition of a wood damage or destroy the character of the historic district. I do remember being at the commission meeting when it was purchased for a dollar. And we reached out to the new owner about the possibility of doing historic tax credits and here's trust fund grants and, and that nature. And told him we'd be available because that's part of our job as the resource commission is to provide that resource and give them direction on where to go. He never made any attempt to, you know, you know, look down any one of those avenues. And I could tell at the time, it was going to be, probably be a, a stretch for them to even do it. Because they were talking about trying to do a lot of it with in-kind work from the, the church itself, which as a architect and somebody on that scares me to death because I'd been in that building. I've seen a number of the structural roof members had basically broke and snapped. So I really, you know, would not want to have private citizens in there trying to do some work, you know. Having a contractor in there alone is going to be a little sketchy. Then you have somebody in there doing it that they don't know what to do and something could happen, so. That being said, we have to, our commission opposes it. But I understand that they have, you know, my direct knowledge, you know, staff and us have reached out to, you know, the owner to look at alternative measures and they have not done anything at this point.
So, so at this point, it's just become too expensive to do anything with?
Oh, yeah. I mean, if it was 150, you know, right now, even, and you add the COVID-related expenses and, and things, especially when it comes to lumber and steel, I don't even want to try to throw a number at it right now because it would just, the redo that, that roof structure would be fairly significant, especially where it's broken away from the building and then shoring up that wall and restabilizing it. And, you know, the wall most likely is just, you know, probably an unreinforced masonry wall on that west side where it's bowing out. You know, you're not going to be, that's probably, we're talking probably rebuilding a portion of the wall and salvaging some of the masonry there. So we're, we're looking at a significant expense to get that done.
You consider the location of the building not, taking down the building not as detrimental to the central core of downtown?
Well, in regards to this, as a central aspect...
More or less on a fringe?
Well, it's, it is on the fringe, but it is a, as you enter into the district area itself. So that's the exception that the state historic officer is identifying is being of this right on the edge of the district, bringing in, going into the downtown area. That's the exception that they're looking at is it would be an open, basically an open lot, an open sore there to the downtown district. So, but by nature, you know, demolition will damage or destroy, you know, by pure definition, it'll, it'll destroy that, that aspect of it right there. But like I, as I said before, I know that avenues were presented and, you know, help was offered. And staff helped, offered to help. I know Jeff offered to help out with them on some, on some legal stuff. And no one ever reached out to either of us that I'm aware of, so.
With the feasible and prudent phrasing of the alternates, that's really pretty broad. Because then you look at the feasibility of money as you've covered the cost and the process to go in to try and work in a building that's already collapsed is how do you, you do that? Then when you go back, now you've got to comply with current building codes. So even if you can overcome the money, you know, you know, it's 500,000 could be easy just into getting the building an empty shell, so.
Yeah, that's not even addressing the mechanical, electrical aspects of the building.
Just a shell.
Yeah, we're talking just doing the shell. And right now, you add the COVID with getting a, trying to get a contractor in, in a reasonable timeframe to address the issue right now. Going into good masonry work, work time, they're going to want to be working on projects they've already bid and the like. No one's going to want to come and drop what they're doing to come here and work on, work on that structure.
But then in the end, if you had it stabilized and weather tight, then what is the building going to be other than an empty building?
Yeah.
You know, if there's a lot of other spaces available that would not take the dollar investment that this building does. So although it does contribute aesthetically to the downtown, the feasibility of trying to preserve it is, is, is beyond, you know, definitely we're a city. We should not be putting that type of money into that building to preserve it. And, you know, I've, I've seen in some cities where they'll preserve a storefront and then build behind it. But now you've got the maintenance on an exposed masonry wall that is, it's an ongoing money pit for the city. So without a, a private individual coming in to tackle it at this time, financial feasibility overshadows any contribution to the historic downtown that we have.
I'm not aware, I mean, you'd have to ask a, you know, realtor. I don't know where of anybody interested in the building. I know somebody that was at one point in time and they reviewed what the potential cost was to repair it and bring it up. And that alone said, they said no to it. It wasn't, it wasn't worth it to them. And even, just even the demo cost, they were like, man, I got to build, build something new on that, on that property, so.
As long as it's been empty, I think if somebody saw it as an investment to turn some money, that they could have tracked the owner down. And, you know, we're at the, we're at the point, we can't allow it to collapse because that's unpredictable. We don't know which way the walls will go, how far they'll go, who would be driving by. Or so we, we have to proceed with, with the action and, and look at, at, at the feasibility financially. We can't see that anybody has seen it that way. And the, the prudent part of it, we have to continue to make it safe for our citizens.
Yeah, because part of it is, you know, the, the owner is to be the one that has to be exploring these options, not necessarily use the city staff. And David has, the owner expressed any?
No, Jeff's had limited contact, but I know they have no means or desire, Jeff.
That's correct. It's actually a church that took title and I offered to help them fill out the application for tax exempt status so it would go off the tax rolls, so the taxes would stop accruing. And it's simply a matter of filling out paperwork and having him sign it. And that never happened. And as a result, the taxes, I think in the documents you have here are over 30,000, but they're not going to get paid. And the sad thing is, like Leonard said, it's unpredictable when it might fall. It's going to fall unless the city takes it down. It's, it's going to fall and it could damage the building to the east. And so then, then you've got another building to deal with, so.
Because those are pretty heavy timbers up there in that, up in that roof.
I don't know what alternatives there are other than demolition.
I think do, being safety being the utmost important, like we would do any structure that has been damaged, whether it's by wind or fire or whatever, once it's considered to be unsafe, the prudent thing to do is to move forward and demo the facility. And I think we've done what we needed to do, from what I understand. And from what I've heard today, I think we're doing, we should do the right thing and go ahead and proceed with demo of this building.
I'm, I'm prepared to make the motion that's in front of me. All of this needs to be read, correct?
Yes.
Beginning with the word after?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, after considering all information received and all relevant factors, and after considering all possible planning and alternatives to minimize harm to the property, I move that a finding be made that there is no feasible and prudent alternative to the proposed demolition and to authorize demolition of, of the property at 201 East Main Street in the interest of public safety and to minimize harm to the adjoining buildings. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Next item, excuse me. Consider adopting an ordinance modifying the income limits to qualify for hardship rates for water, sewer, and sanitation services.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is something that actually staff's been working on off and on since probably 2018. We recognize that there are a lot of people in our community that really struggle to pay their utility bills with the city. We do have a hardship rate, but it's not been updated in, in quite some time. And it's set at a certain dollar amount. And we would like to tie it to this HUD extremely low income limit. And that way it is automatically adjusted every year. It's still, you know, a, a very low income, but at least it would get modified automatically. And we're thinking, you know, we really want to target those people that are, are struggling. And this will also, if there's additional people in the family, the table takes that into consideration and the income is adjusted. What we have right now is a total household income, one amount, no matter if one people or one personless, there are five. It doesn't matter. So we're trying to adjust this. This is a, a first step. And we would like to come back. I've, I've talked to April and Lacy and maybe make some further modifications in the future. But this would be a, a first start. We kind of want to see how it's going. Right now, we have 17 people on the hardship rate.
Is that pretty much what the average has been over the years?
When I researched this in 2018, we had 11. So we've had six more than 2018. So in three years, we've had an additional six added.
Do you feel that the reason for that is that maybe it's just not well known?
Yeah, that might be part of it. I anticipate the additional people were probably, people, when they call in and have, they're struggling, they'll probably say, hey, do you qualify for the hardship rate? And they have to fill out some paperwork and things like that. So it could be that our staff are pushing it better now than they did in the past, perhaps.
Okay. Will this be on our website if this is adopted?
We have the hardship application on our website already. It's on the finance page, I believe. Isn't that correct, Lacy? I'm pretty sure I've seen it on there. Yes, we, we have it on our website and we also...
We, we have it on our website and we also, you know, anytime a, a customer comes up and, and indicates that they're struggling or they're past due on their bill, we, we always offer the, the hardship application. You know, it's kind of a sensitive subject, so we typically just point them to the applications and, and tell them that if they need any assistance filling it out to let us know. But we, we do push that pretty hard.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, do you have questions for Kelly or Lacy on this? I'm just looking at this.
Well, I don't have a question for you, but in general, I really appreciate tying these types of ordinances. As we develop them and as we, we structure them, we tie them to some kind of automatically adjusted metric of this nature so that creates more robust governance. And we don't have to return to them and they don't have the, they have less of an opportunity of going obsolete in a short period of time. So I appreciate the improvement at the quality of this ordinance by linking it to a, 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 a regularly adjusted metric. So keep up that portion of this effort.
I think it's great to see our administration looking beyond just roads, water lines, but actually addressing the needs of the people. You know, there's a lot of work that you have to do and to take time to look at a, a need that is specific to elderly, the low income families. I think that's, I compliment you for, for taking the time and, and that dedication to see it through, to realize that we had an outdated system and bring it up to date and, and start pushing it out for the public to know. So, you know, you, compliment you for taking on the, the task on your own and, and bringing it to our attention that we need to revise our ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Maybe this information could be highlighted in, as an insert in the next water bill. So people may just not be.
The newsletter.
A newsletter, huh? Maybe do that so they will become aware of it. But, but from what the, my other fellow commissioners have said, thank you for looking at some of these issues. And there's other things that you've looked at that have gone unnoticed or untouched and have not been looked at. And we're trying to clean up a lot of these things, make improvements for our employees, for the people that we serve. It's important that we continue to look at things that are outdated or haven't been modified in a long time. Or if there, if there is even a need for them to exist. So I thank you for your due diligence, going back and looking at these and making changes and adaptations where you see we need to make them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, without any more questions, do I have a motion? Excuse me.
I move to adopt an ordinance modifying the income limits to qualify for hardship rates for water, sewer, and sanitation services.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item, consider awarding Riverside Beach Family Aquatic Center Pool Coatings Contract to Blast It Clean. I under, I understand from the documents that you had sent out, I guess the services actually hadn't been recoded since the initial construction and opening of the aquatic center. Would that be a true statement?
I, I believe that's true, yes. And when I, when I asked this, this company that has been on this, you know, what a typical maintenance schedule would be like, really ten years is probably the, the maximum that we should visit this every, every year. So we are way overdue.
Okay. And if I also remember right, was there a question about the type of coating that was initially put in when the aquatic center was?
I don't know if that flooring is, is original, but the, the granular, I don't know, what's it called?
There, there's a granular rubber product that's used at the zero entry pool and also one of the children's pools. You know, if you fall down, it lessens the impact. I believe that was an athletic surface. But they, us, but the company that we're working with has found a submersible, a product that is rated for a submersible surface in a chlorinated environment. So.
Okay.
So it won't break off like, like.
Okay, good, good. So we should get longevity out of it. So it's something that's way overdue. Okay, gentlemen, questions?
Okay. Well, with this information, then can you, or are you going to set up a, a s- schedule so that each year you're either encumbering money for a ten year replacement cycle? Or are you going to start addressing some of the maintenance particularly to the pool to develop a, a sequence? So it seems like a lot of times we're waiting till it, it breaks to then address it. So I see from, well, I'm taking from your comment about ten years that you've got a plan that you're.
Yes. So over the last few years, you know, I've slowly been adding that into, to our budget. So we had twenty-five thousand and then we really, we didn't do anything with that twenty-five thousand because we quickly realized that what we need to do can't be done for twenty-five thousand. So then in twenty twenty-one, we budgeted fifty thousand with the intent of being able to combine those funds. So I, I'm still learning what we need to put in, but that, that fifty thousand dollars basically has been put in to our, our capital budget kind of perpetually to, to start addressing these issues and, and build up a maintenance plan.
What about looking at the, the timeframe? It seems like when you close the pool, that's the time to start bidding and.
So with, with this contract specifically, one thing that I really liked about it is they, they will schedule a, a walkthrough after the closing of the pool and will come back and address any needs that we have related to, you know, the, the caulking in the ceiling and the painting. So anything that's damaged within the, you know, the season, they'll actually be fixing or making recommendations of things that might be out of, out of the scope of their work, what they're responsible for. But they kind of provide a built in inspection for us, which is great.
So this is, I know John and I were, we were talking about streets and roads and the whole purpose to preserve a street is to keep the water from getting under it. So these coatings basically do the same thing. If you let the water get through the joints into the base, then you accelerate the deterioration of the concrete. So this is critical that we do develop a, a schedule that we repair it or replace it prior to failure than till after failure and we've got major problems.
All right. Are we good?
Good.
Are we good? I understand there was just, there were several that had interest, but only one bid. And that's true with a lot of things that we put out for bid. Sometimes we only get one. So I, I thank you for looking at this and bringing this forward to us. And I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I move to award the pool coatings contract to Blast It Clean in the amount of ninety-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item, consider authorizing bids for procurement of standardized sanitation trash carts.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is an item that I, we had planned on going to Polycart several years ago and had the funds. And as you know, they got rerouted for the apparatus bay. We have built the fund up again so that we can get back on that project. And John has worked really hard on, on developing that and I'll let him cover the rest of this.
Yep. The, i- if you look around most municipalities and virtually every private sanitation company is using a Polycart similar to what we're looking at. These are plastic carts approximately ninety-six gallons in, in capacity. Large wheels, eleven inch wheels, so you can get them up and over a curb. And in ninety-six gallon capacity, will cover, and cover the trash that a, a family generates typically in about a week. So it's an appropriate size. It's very likely easier to handle for the residents. It's also easier to handle for our personnel. Back in the past, before I, before I showed up, the decision had been made to buy, buy sanitation trucks that are equipped with arms that can lever these ninety-six gallon trash carts up. So now we're greatly reducing the lifting necessary by our sanitation workers. That reduces our workman comp liability. And actually, I, you know, got on YouTube and timed it and it's about ten seconds for a full cycle of one of these trash carts coming in. So if you had, as we do right now, two people moving carts, well, you have a driver, you could get two of these carts done in about a minute. That greatly would, that'd be more efficient than dealing with multiple strange sized sorts of containers. Sometimes no containers, sometimes bags. And I, I think, I think it would be a great service to both the citizens, the residents, as well as our, our sanitation group. So.
One of the, the pluses about this is that with this Polycart, that would allow for pickup from the front of the residence primarily on ma- majority of all the residents that were picking up sanitation now.
Yes.
So that, that would be a big plus. So we're not driving down these alleys consistently with the heavy trucks. And the other thing is, uh, injuries, workman comp. You know, I, I've always tried to lighten whatever I put into a bag, but I know some people fill up a bag to the top and, and I've seen some of them try to lift some of those. And they're extremely heavy and I can see why people get hurt. And this would, this would solve that by having that and being that the trucks are already retrofitted to handle that. That would be a, a big improvement. And I understand that the city will provide the receptacle for, for all residents. And they will make, we will make repairs unless it's been.
Abused.
Abused by the owner. And then if it's stolen and missing from their yard, then they're encouraged, they are to refile a police report.
Yes.
And then at that point, we would replace the cart.
Yes.
So, and they appear to be very durable, very wind stable, stable?
And there's, there's wear, so they're not gonna roll down the road. So, I mean, you know, it's, it's a small design feature, but it's an important one.
And the lids are connected, so they're not gonna blow off.
Right. Yeah. And one of the things to note, and I didn't put this in, in the notes, but these carts typically run about fifty dollars. If you've priced your own, the, the kind of cart that you and I can purchase for fifty dollars is not, nowhere near the quality of this cart. It's nowhere near the size. I mean, so it's, typically when buying in bulk, the city will have a tremendous advantage at getting advantageous prices that our residents simply couldn't get.
I think a regular thirty gallon trash can runs at least twenty dollars or more.
Oh, yes.
At, at least. And that's, and you're not getting a, a high dollar one. You're just getting a entry level one.
And if it has wheels at all, they're about that big around and.
And that would not come with wheels for twenty dollars. No. And those that do are not, I've had one and they're not, they're not worth buying.
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for John?
John, I just wanna confirm that, that each of the trucks that we have right now is equipped to, to handle these or will be equipped to handle these shortly. Is that correct?
Yes. Two of the trucks currently are not, do not have the lifting arms, but we are looking for quotations in order to get those in. The last number I heard was the, the arm itself was about nine thousand dollars.
I see. Would these, would these have been the last two trucks that have come into service that don't have the arms? Or these are existing trucks?
These are existing trucks that we have. So.
Okay.
We've been, all the new trucks we've bought in the last few years, we have gotten with the arms, knowing we were wanting to get, get to this. So. They just have a few of the older ones they have to retrofit. Is that correct, John?
Yes, just, you know, just two.
Just two. All right. Commissioner Kalis, any questions?
No, I, I don't have any questions. I've observed, my son lives outside of Denver. Was curious, cause we've been talking about this for a long time and see how they operated with, with the Polycarts and the once a week. And they had one operator in a truck. And it was, it was interesting to see the adaptation of the driver and, you know, they did allow bags to be placed beside the, the Polycart. But, you know, the people were prepared and it was organized and it worked extremely well. So.
And for people, I'm sorry.
Would this be something that, depending on the need that you could change? They, they had a different colored Polycart for recyclables. So and on a different day, they ran a route for recyclables. So with, with our trucks, it does give us a flexibility sometime in the future to add recycled bins to the routes.
I, I haven't investigated that. I would think, we certainly can get different colors. I do know that. So whatever color we initially choose, we could specify a different color for newspaper or cardboard or whatever other, whatever other item we'd like to recycle.
And there are standard colors in the recycling for the different types of recyclables.
I think theirs was light blue for recyclables or green, I don't.
Yeah, it may depend on the type of recyclable.
Yeah. I have no other questions. So.
Well, one comment that had been made previously when this was considered about beautification and, and all that, but I have family members that live in McPherson and they've been doing once a week pickup for considerably length of time. They also recycle and they also have a, a, a green bin where you can put grass clippings and stuff in also. But they're one of the cleanest towns that you'll ever find that you ever have a chance to get up that way. And it's worked for them for years. So I don't think people should have concerns about that. It's big enough to accommodate a lot of trash. So.
And since it has wheels, if somebody's, you know, challenged and can't lift a lot, they can just roll it out and it's really easier to handle.
And, and it's a fairly wide base as well. So it's a wide base, so it's relatively difficult to tip over. And again, eleven inch wheels, that'll take you over a four inch object relatively easily.
All right. All right. Any further questions, gentlemen? Are we good?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. Do I have a motion? Excuse me.
I move to authorize bidding for standard sanitation carts.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item. Consider initiating rezoning of attractive land from R three, low density, multifamily district to M one light industrial, industrial district at one seventeen North Wald Avenue.
And Mayor and Commissioners, I appreciate your patience as I threw this on you guys today and I apologize for that. But I got the conditional use permit application from the county today. And as I was reviewing potential options, it seems like it would make sense to make that lot the same zone as the rest of their property. And that gives us other alternatives we can look at. And I did contact Jim Wright and, and visited with him about initiate, the city initiating that zoning and at least we could look at that through the public hearing process. And he was fine with it. So we recommend that you initiate the public hearing, which would be on May fourth, along with their conditional use permit. And I will get with the county and see if there's some things we can do to problem solve this concern so that we can work something out that will meet our codes, but also meet their needs.
Yep. Cause I know they've complained to me about Myrtle.
Yes.
You know, where they're, where they park on both sides of that area gravel. And that road is pretty much bottomed out from the heavy truck traffic on there.
Yes, there's a lot of heavy equipment that they drive in that area.
Pretty good sized potholes along that stretch, which they've commented on here recently. So. Gentlemen, I'll open that up.
So although the application for the conditional use permit is included, all we're looking at is setting a public hearing. There are some issues with their conditional use permit that you'll address.
Yes.
And it'll be resum. And it'll be resubmitted?
Yes, and, and the planning commission, as we've talked before, cannot, uh, approve their request for anything less than what the code requires.
Okay.
Only you have that authority, uh, through that, um, if it's in the public good, and it's only in the supplementary parking conditional use section. It doesn't apply to any other conditional uses, so it's really kind of unique, but, um, but it does provide you that flexibility.
So I understand that what we will, if we do tonight, we would just set a public hearing for the rezoning and then...
Yes.
Come back later.
Yes.
Their conditional use has to go to planning and zoning, and then come to us.
Yes. And the, the rezoning and conditional use all be considered together at the same meeting.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Hayes?
I understand it as just, uh, establishing the public hearing as well, so I'm ready to make the motion.
All right. Go ahead.
I move to initiate a public hearing to rezone attractive land from R three, low-density, multifamily district to M one, light industrial district at one seventeen North Wald Avenue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item for commission action. This is, uh, in regards to, uh, prom, and...
Yes.
We've been asked to extend or waive the curfew for April the seventeenth...
Yes.
For prom activities which are being held at the Nazarene, uh, Center?
Yeah, the after-prom.
At the after-prom.
And the prom, actual prom's at Dicky's.
Okay. Gentlemen?
I have...
I don't have anything, I mean...
I'm, I'm good.
Just need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we extend curfew, um...
April seventeenth.
April seventeenth. Do we need a time, or just...
No, date's fine.
Second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Item five, uh, discussion. This is a memo from the city attorney regarding consumption of alcohol in public right-of-way. Jeff?
I'll be honest, I don't know if I have my hands around this issue. Um, it's very, alcohol laws in Kansas, you've heard me say this before, I think they're archaic, and they're, they throw together these, uh, new statutes. This statute that I've looked at, Chief Harrison heard of before I did. I go to the city attorney meetings every year. He must have a better source of information. I don't know. They passed a state law that says a city by ordinance can establish common consumption areas. And I've gone through that statute, and to me, there's a lot of gray areas I, and I'll have to call the ABC Legal Department to get clarification for you. But in the meantime, I wanted a little more direction from you as commissioners on what you're envisioning. My understanding is we're talking about the central business district, uh, and businesses that already have license, like, it's called a drinking establishment license. I just, a few names, like, uh, the brewery, Turbo's, Jack's, Brothers', uh, if they want to have an event, expand from the, the four walls of their building...
Right.
To some exterior location. That's my understanding of what we're talking about. And then, um, and I need to find out from the state if that has to, we have, the city has to go through this common consumption area ordinance requirement, or whether we can just adopt our own freestanding ordinance, like our park ordinance, and, and do an application. But the, the way this was worded concerned me, I'd not seen it before.
Well, it seemed like with the common consumption area that that would be a permanent area established, and somebody would apply for a permit to, through the state, to sell or consume alcohol there, and then it went into some barrier requirements and all. I think the one, the one case where we've already authorized a patio on the city right-of-way, and it's for the consumption of alcohol, but it's in conflict with our city ordinance for consuming, so, do, it seems like, and I don't know if, if, is it possible that in an area like this, that since the way it's established, the building is owned by another individual, so we granted the conditional, or the right-of-way use permit to them, can you establish a license or a permit that the tenant could apply for that would allow that established area on the right-of-way to be used to consume alcohol? So we're not going through and establishing a common, uh, consumption area and then an additional permit, but can we issue just a permit to consume on their leased space?
Yeah, it's kinda how we started, and then, just with the discussions with Kelly, Jeff, and Jerry, Jerry brought this to our attention, and, and, uh, that's, I think, why Jeff is trying to get some...
I think the answer to the brewery patio area will be to amend the right-of-way use agreement, to say that a, a lessee of the owner, uh, the patio area will be considered part of the premises, or something like that. Uh, and I don't think that, we, I don't think we have to go through this common consumption area.
Yeah.
The common consumption area, to me, appears to be very broad, and once you...
Right.
Establish it, multiple entities can take advantage of it, you can't restrict it.
Right. It's more like establishing the oval as a common consumption area for events, and then each event, Oktoberfest, or whoever, would then apply for a permit, permit to operate in there. But with the patio at the brewery, we can't attach it to their right-of-way use permit because it's not the brewery's right-of-way use permit. So there's where, you know, we've got the crossover, and it, it could apply to other cases that a tenant is using the space, but they don't possess the right-of-way use permit. So there, if, if it would be a separate license from the city, a separate permit from the city, it would cover both cases, 'cause now you're not tying it to a building owner that isn't the user of the space.
That's kinda what they're, they have two events they'd like to do this summer.
Yeah.
And that's where I'm trying to get at, and that's, that's, they talk to me.
The area across the street, that two-ten and two-twelve West Main, it's been, I guess, re- remodeled, for lack of a better word, into a gathering, public gathering area. It's not owned by the city, but it could be designated and be permitted for that purpose. And then multiple, I mean, the brewery, or Jack's, or Turbo, they could all have events here.
And they would apply, if I understand what the common consumption, or once it's designated by the city, the actual permit then comes from the state?
Yeah, but you can add another layer of permits on by the city, because the state permits is not gonna go into much detail about, like, blocking the streets and all this, and, and the city ordinance could establish a permitting process.
With the state, if it, if it has to be tied to the state, that's just another layer of complication.
I agree.
But if it could be tied, you know, to a permit, so you designate that area as a common consumption area, and then to get the permit, that it would be a fee to the city, that we would authorize the hours of operation and the length of, of period, but it could all be handled in-house without going to, uh, I guess, alcohol, tobacco, what minister the permits, or Bureau in, in Topeka?
Honestly, I don't know why that common consumption area statute is there, 'cause the cities, because it just makes it harder for the cities to do what they wanna do at their level. You gotta do this in addition to what you wanna do, almost. I, I don't understand the motivation for passing that.
So the key would be to avoid ABC, the ABC, and set up our own ordinance that would address more specifically the conditions that we want to be considered and met?
It will be a second layer of regulation.
Right, because we, we can expand on whatever it is. If they're broad, we can ex- expand on what they're offering. We can't, we can't be less, but we can be more.
The state law authorizes the Secretary of Revenue to adopt regulations to implement this, and I checked, and there are no regulations on it that I could find. If, you know, so I, I, I was really in the dark putting this memo together. I'm sorry I can't give you more details, but I looked, I just couldn't find any, so...
So we've really have two issues. We've got one where an area on a right-of-way has been granted with a use permit, and now the tenant wants to use it for consumption alcohol. We need to address that. But then we, we've got another area that looks like if it could be used for an event to consume alcohol, then we've got to set that up as a separate layer. Whether the permits to use it are the same, but they're two different areas that, for the, the park area, for example, we have to follow and probably designate that as a area, but it needs further investigation.
I agree.
So, so you were asking for direction, is that...
So you, you wanna start small, take baby steps, and then see how it goes, and you could always add more common consumption areas?
To the mayor and the commission is, we have a request, uh, for this summer for two events that wanna use that half-block downtown. I don't wanna give too many details of what they're wanting to do, but part of the event would serve alcohol. And that's where, what they're asking, if the commission is willing to set up a policy to do that, and that's what we kinda went to Jeff, but, and to Jerry of, to figure out how to get there, and then you have the patio issue, which we're aware of.
So are you, are you talking about closing off Eighth Street, that half-block on Eighth Street?
Half-block of Eighth Street to hold an event that would involve alcohol. And we were working on that right-of-way application for the downtown.
Yeah.
But we got with Jeff and Jerry to try to contrib, to put this all into one application, and that's where we kinda got into this area, and I don't, Jerry could maybe speak to, if he has any concerns, but that's, that's the request and what we're trying to do.
It sounds like we really need three. We need one for the patio, one for the street, because last year, remember, outside of Brothers' for the, the car show, they had requested to be allowed to take alcohol, and we said no, because we had no provisions. So what we're, you're talking about the half-block on Ninth Street would be applicable potentially to other...
Yeah.
Areas. And then, the, the, uh, the lot, it's not on the right-of-way, the, the park, that would have to look at a common consumption area, so you're dealing with it in one ordinance or one action, but then have permits that would be issued for particular events, so it's not a continual beer garden.
Yeah.
It may be we can just deal with this by city ordinance and not do the consumption area.
Yeah.
And just, but we'd have to amend our existing ordinance, 'cause right now, there is a ban on public right-of-way.
Yeah. And I under- I understand what the, uh, the way that the common, the consumption area is set up, that the area is established, but actually to consume, you have to have a permit, so that you don't get a cooler set with a keg, and then you just walk down the street and can get your drink at any time, and...
Uh, you know, you, what's that area in, in, by Sprint Center? The district there where they have the big screen TV?
Night district?
Yeah, that's, I think that's on the Missouri side.
Yes.
So this law wouldn't apply, but something similar to that would be a common consumption area. I, I think if we amend our ordinance to allow, and, and one of the questions was, if we amend our ordinance to allow alcohol in the public right-of-way, like the area he described, do you want it coming back to the commission for approval, or do you wanna set up a, a tight enough procedure just to allow staff to take applications and, and pass on it themselves without coming to the commission every time?
I would think that if you, you set it up so there's a permit process that they comply with the standards and complete their permit, then the staff would issue it like a, um, business license, or, you know, something like that, that it's all laid out in detail...
That's kinda what we were thinking about, you know, if a standard one...
Head that direction for the, the summer events.
Yeah.
Then I'll explore this common consumption area.
And if, my thought was, and if it was alcohol, it would go to Jerry, and Jerry would approve it, and then, and, you know, if it was just a standard event with no alcohol, then it would be handled, still involves the police department, 'cause anytime we, they handle all the traffic in the street and all that, so...
I think, I think it needs a starting point, and then monitor it. If it doesn't work, then change it.
Yeah.
Now, what we don't want to progress is that all over town, we're having requests to close blocks so we can have a block party.
Visiting with Kelly, we simply limited this to the downtown. It's a downtown, kinda the, was it, was it the historic district or the fire district that we kinda put it?
Yeah, the historic and the fire district are now the same.
So that's where this only applies.
But I think it can be set up as, once the ordinance or the regulation is established, that the actual permit for the function could be an application and handled.
Okay, I've got my questions answered.
Just a, just a comment, and that is, an ordinance of this nature is normally established to establish, uh, or prepared to establish responsibility and liability, and, and if there's a necessary requirement for some kind of event insurance, and those types of provisions are within an ordinance of this nature, and that's what I'd be looking for.
Yeah. We def, we, we're working with Mara, we'll make sure we have all that.
All right. Any other questions? Are we good?
I'm good.
All righty, moving along, uh, reports. We have sales, sales tax reports for February twenty twenty-one and March twenty twenty-one.
And those have been provided to you, but if you have any specific questions, Lacy's here.
I don't, gentlemen?
I do not.
I'm glad to see that, uh, they're, they're good.
Yeah.
They're still looking good, so it's a big plus. Commissioner Kalish?
We don't have any additional information. What controls, when you look at the overlay of the various years from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, they're very sporadic on the revenue. Does the state, or is there any information that kinda tries to summarize, to explain why the, the, we experienced the peaks, so, 'cause they're so, they're so erratic?
I cannot give out any additional information on it. Um, I mean, I can try and look into the details. I don't think I can tell from the information that I get, like, if there's a difference in number of days or something like that, um, but I, I can't give out any of the additional detailed information, unfortunately.
They're pretty drastic in the fluctuation, and so, you know, it, it's hard to see what's happening, how the, you know, if it's economy, or particular factors, some event, you know, I, I thought with the stimulus checks coming out, that maybe we're seeing some response of, you know, an increase of sales taxes as, as people are using the funds, but, uh, when I looked at your, your composite graphs over the years, it, there's really not much pattern, that they just spike, and then they'll drop back down the next month.
Do you know any of the, the rules for divulging any of this information? Can I bucket them into, um, like, industry groups or anything like that?
You're talking about individual business?
I can't, I can't give any individual business or, or any identifying information, but if I said, like, um, retail sales versus...
I, I didn't know you couldn't do it. I'd have to look at the statute.
I had asked that question in the past and what I was hoping that you would be able to tell me is that you could break them down by standard industrial codes or something like that, so that we could get a demographic breakdown for that.
I'll, I'll look into it some more. I, I don't know if I get those. I, I get codes, but, um, I'll, I will ask.
You know, common sense tells you that your big sales tax producers would be auto sales and Walmart. And auto sales, uh, you know, I don't know how many units they sell per month. It may depend on how good a year they're having and when the corporation decides to offer rebates. You know, that differs year to year, so that may be part of it. I, I imagine, and I don't know, I honestly don't, I'm just speculating, but I would think that would have a huge impact on sales tax revenue.
Your, your food costs continue to go up from canned goods to, to paper products to everything. You can, you can see those have gone up at a minimum ten percent or more, depending on what you're looking at from just a few months ago, from staples to just about everything. If you pay attention to what you're buying in the store, they continually to, uh, increase.
And that's when you look at the increased sales tax revenue, if it's driven by increased pricing, then we're really, we're not gaining anything, you know, it's costing more. So it's not like we're getting more money now than we planned, but now we're spending more for the same product.
You, I could not give out information that would lead you to make that conclusion.
Are you saying you don't know or you can't give out the information?
Both.
So, so you're telling me that this happened in college at a presentation of maybe yes and maybe no.
Yes.
Good answer.
All of a choice, yes, no, maybe.
All right, any other? We're good?
We're confused, but we're.
Okay, well, that's about par for the course. Thank you, Lacy. All righty, gentlemen, you've had a chance to review the Independence Historical Preservation of Resource Commission minutes and the recreation committees.
I have.
I have no questions.
No questions, all right. Moving along, item seven, uh, city manager comments. Kelly?
Um, yeah, I got a couple, a couple extra ones. We would like to know if you would like to set up a work session on the fourteenth in the afternoon, potentially maybe at one thirty to talk about financing mechanisms for the street project, city hall and quality of life. This is information that Lacy needs to, um, prepare a request for financial services.
What day was that?
It's the, uh, fourteenth, it's a Wednesday and it'd be at one thirty. And the reason we're not suggesting in the morning is we have moved our pandemic meetings to the second and fourth Wednesday, or the first and third Wednesdays, right? Or second and fourth. And, and it falls on one of those pandemic meeting mornings.
What time of day did you say?
One thirty, if you're available.
That looks available to me.
Yeah, I should, I should be one thirty on the fourteenth of April, yeah. I should be available. I'll make my showroom available.
And what was the purpose?
Is to, um, work on the different financing, um, options for upcoming large projects. You know, what we're going to bond and that kind of thing. And then another thing is, um, David, do you want to give them an update on the power factor?
Yeah, we just received this, as you know, uh, one of, probably one of the first things John did when we get here with the city was help us do the power factor. And the company that installed that for us, uh, asked Carrie at West Star to give updates. And we just received this the other day and Kelly thought you guys would like to know. That it is working.
Because once you, once you hit ninety percent, you don't have a penalty and we're hitting ninety-eight.
We've had a penalty for a long time, so this will be great improvement.
That is, that is a big improvement.
And then another thing is a reminder of the work session coming up on the twenty-first at nine AM. That's the third Wednesday and we want to meet at the West Mazel Em as a meeting place. And then during the meeting, I got an email from Mackie and he said that a hundred and fifty-seven people have opened and filled out at least the first question of the survey and ninety-seven have completed the entire survey. And so I would like to encourage, um, people to, um, fill that out. They did arrive in the mail, uh, I believe early this week.
Yes.
And, um, we have had quite a few returned and Lacy's entered them in on the online portal, uh, the Survey Monkey link that Mackie set up. And then, of course, people can go in there and do that directly. We have a banner on our website that they can, uh, select and, and fill that out. Or they all got paper versions, so. Just kind of giving you an update on that.
Okay, all right. Are you good, Kelly?
Yep, I'm good.
Commissioner comments. Commissioner Hayes, you have any comments for this evening?
I do not.
Commissioner Kish?
I don't have any.
And I don't have any either. Uh, David, do we have any public concerns? None. All right, and we're moving to item number ten, an executive session. Hang on here a minute. Okay. We have, uh, two. Let's approach item number A. Um, I make a motion for an executive session. I move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with an attorney representing the city regarding a legal issue pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception found at KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two. And this will be for thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes.
And that meeting will resume at seven thirty-seven? Seven forty, let's make it seven forty? All right, so that, that is the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll sing the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. That will be, uh, Kelly, David, Jeff, the commission.
And Seth Jones, attorney by phone, Lacy Lees will be in the first portion of it. And then John Garrus, the sec, city attorney, will be in the second portion.
Okay, of, of this motion right here?
That motion, yes.
All right.
It's seven forty and the commission meeting is back in.
It's seven forty and the commission meeting is back in session. Uh, there was no action taken and I make a motion for a second executive session. I move that we recess for an executive session concerning confidential data relating to financial affairs and/or trade secrets of a company pursuant to the exception found at KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B four. The meeting will resume at eight-ten. It'll be thirty minutes.
Alright.
And that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried.
All right, the commission is back in session and we're going to go back into executive session again for 10 minutes. So we will come back in at 8:21. And that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. All right. All right, commission meeting is back in session and there was no action taken. I am ready for adjournment. I make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. [S02] Aye. Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.